Go ahead and call this meeting in the Moberly City Council to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Lucas.
Here.
Kimmons.
Here.
McEwen.
Here.
Graff.
Skubik.
Here.
Thank you. Everyone should have been able to take a look at a copy of the agenda for this evening. Are there any changes that anyone would like to make to the agenda? Hearing none, we have a motion for the approval of the agenda.
She'll move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Tonight's agenda has been approved. Also in your packets, you should have received a copy of the minutes from the last council meeting. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the minutes?
She'll move.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Minutes stand approved as written. Just to like to let everyone know that, actually, Mr. Bogowski, do you have any visitors you'd like to introduce?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we are joined by Sharon Wizenhand from the Randolph County Health Department to address the council about an item later on in the meeting. So, welcome.
Welcome. Glad to have you. Also like to let everyone else know, if there is anyone that would like to address the council, please come up, see the clerk, fill out a green card. You'll have four minutes to do that, and we'll call you up a little bit towards the end of the meeting. So, if you could get those green cards filled out, we would greatly appreciate it. Okay, we're going to start off this evening. It looks like we have a public hearing in regards to the proposed tax rates for the 25, 26 fiscal year. So, we're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing, and we're going to turn it over to our city clerk to get a little bit more clarification.
Thank you, Mayor. As required by law, we're holding this public hearing to discuss the city's property tax levy for the upcoming fiscal year 2025 through 26. The tax rates are provided to the city by the Missouri State Auditor. They're calculated to generate the amount of revenue needed to support the budget adopted for this fiscal year. This notice was published in the Moberly Monitor Index to provide residents the opportunity to attend tonight and speak either in support of or against the proposed levy. At this point, we have preliminary figures, but the final certified tax rates will be received from the state auditor in July. Once we receive those final numbers, we'll bring forward an ordinance to establish the official tax levy for 2025, and that will be presented to the council for approval in August.
Thank you, Ms. Hans. Is there anyone that would like to speak for or against the proposed tax rates for next fiscal year at this time? You will have four minutes to come up and address the council if so. Looks like we have no takers, so we'll go ahead and close this public hearing. Thank you all very much. Next on the list, we have receipt of a proposal from Pretz Contracting LLC for infill housing at 616 South Fifth Street. We need to receive these proposals. So, do we have a motion for the approval, or a motion to receive these proposals?
She'll move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. That proposal has been received. Number four, receipt of proposal from J. Madison Development for infill housing at 609 Franklin Avenue. Do we have a motion for, to receive that proposal?
She'll move.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That proposal as well has been received. Number five, receipt of bids for the 2025 street improvement project. We have a motion for the receipt of these bids?
She'll move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The bids have been received. And number six, receipt of bids for the external auditing services for the city of Moberly. Do we have a motion for the, to receive these proposals as well?
She'll move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. They have been received. Thank you very much. Next, we have the consent agenda, which includes items seven through 12. These items are considered routine and will be adopted with a single vote. Is there any item on the consent agenda that the council would like to pull out for individual discussion? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the reading of the consent agenda?
She'll move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First and only reading, please.
Bill number R.1826, a resolution authorizing and accepting change order number three to the Morley Pump Station retrofit and force main extension contract with Emery Sappan Suns. Bill number R.1827, a resolution accepting the bid and authorizing contracting with Ferris Door and Decorating LLC to install carpet at fire station number one. Bill number R.1828, a resolution accepting the bid of Smith Heating and Cooling to install exhaust ductwork at fire station number one. Bill number R.1829, a resolution accepting bids and authorizing contracting for the 2025 street improvement project. Bill number R.1830, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a financial auditing services agreement with Williams Keepers LLC. And bid number R.1831, a resolution authorizing and accepting a change order to the agreement with L. and J. Development Incorporated for replacement of the Fox Park parking lot.
Thank you. There you have the reading of the consent agenda. Is there any questions or further discussion from council? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
She'll move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The consent agenda has been approved. Thank you. Moving on to ordinances and resolutions. Number 13, an ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have an ordinance authorizing a cooperative agreement for infill development with Pretz Contracting LLC, a Missouri limited liability company. I ask this be read twice for consideration.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. First reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing a cooperative agreement for infill development with Pretz Contracting LLC, a Missouri limited liability company.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Hearing none, second reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing a cooperative agreement for infill development with Pretz Contracting LLC, a Missouri limited liability company.
Any further discussion? Do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
She'll move.
A motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. Roll call, please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Skubik.
Yes. Thank you. The ordinance has been adopted. Number 14, an ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance authorizing a cooperative agreement for infill development with J. Mattson Development LLC, LLC. Two LLCs, I guess. A Missouri limited liability company, and I ask it to be read twice for consideration of passage.
We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor of the reading of the ordinance signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing a cooperative agreement for infill development with J. Madison Development LLC, a Missouri limited liability company.
I don't know if somebody upstairs thinks it's not a good idea or what. Any questions from council? Hearing none, second reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing a cooperative agreement for infill development with J. Madison Development LLC, a Missouri limited liability company.
Thank you. Any further discussion from council? Hearing none, do we have a motion for, a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
She'll move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. Roll call, please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Skubik.
Yes.
Right, thank you. The ordinance has been adopted. Number 15, an ordinance.
Mayor, I have an ordinance authorizing and approving a mutual aid agreement between the city of Moberly, Missouri and the city of Columbia, Missouri, and I ask it to be read twice for consideration.
We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and, do we have a second, or, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing and approving a mutual aid agreement between the city of Moberly, Missouri and the city of Columbia, Missouri.
Any questions from council? Second reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing and approving a mutual aid agreement between the city of Moberly, Missouri and the city of Columbia, Missouri.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We have a motion for the, or, a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
She'll move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. Roll call, please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Skubik.
Yes.
The ordinance has been approved. Number 16, an ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance increasing water and sewer rates. I ask this be read twice for consideration.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First reading, please.
An ordinance increasing water and sewer rates.
Any questions from council? Hearing none, second reading, please.
An ordinance increasing water and sewer rates.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
She'll move.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. Roll call, please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Skubik.
Yes. The ordinance has been approved. Number 17, a resolution.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution of the city of Moberly, Missouri acknowledging receipt of and expressing support for the Moberly Active Transportation Plan presented by the Randolph County Health Department. I ask it to be read once for consideration of passage.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First reading, please.
A resolution of the city of Moberly, Missouri acknowledging receipt of and expressing support for the Moberly Active Transportation Plan presented by the Randolph County Health Department.
Thank you. We've had the one and only reading of the ordinance. I believe that we have someone here to talk on this. Is that correct?
No. If, if, if you have questions.
Okay, okay. So, I thought maybe you had a presentation. Does anyone have any additional questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the resolution?
She'll move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Resolution has been approved. Thank you. Number 18, a resolution.
Yes, I have a resolution authorizing and accepting a change order to the Kiwanis Park Phase Two contract with P.S. Commercial Play LLC, and I ask it to be read once for consideration.
We have a motion for the reading of the resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First and only reading, please.
A resolution authorizing and accepting a change order to the Kiwanis Park Phase Two contract with P.S. Commercial Play LLC.
Thank you. Do we have any additional questions from council? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the resolution?
She'll move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Resolution has been approved. Number 19, a resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the city of Moberly, Missouri to pay expenses due between May 1st, 2025, and May 14th, 2025, in the amount of $486,000, $486,128.65. I ask this be read once for consideration.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for the reading of the resolution? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First and only reading, please.
A resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the city of Moberly, Missouri to pay expenses due between May 1st, 2025, and May 14th, 2025, in the amount of $486,128.65.
Thank you. And I hereby certify that there's sufficient money standing to the credit of the city of Moberly, Missouri, unappropriated in the funds identified in this resolution to meet the requirements of this resolution. City Treasurer Allison Boyd. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the resolution?
She'll move.
Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Resolution has been approved. That will do it for ordinances and resolutions for this evening. Next on the list, each month, we ask the department heads to fill out a little report, kind of telling us what's going on in their particular offices, and try to keep the council up to date, so we, we're aware of exactly what's happening. So, this is an opportunity for the council to ask the department heads any questions. Are there any questions for any of the department heads this week, or this month? Mr. Skubik.
Mr. Mayor, yes. Tom, and I know I asked you this last time, but on the, the committee that you have for the occupancy ordinance and the codes, can you nail down a date on when you think we might have those suggestions? There's, I just know there's going to be some public comment that, on that, and just curious timeframe wise.
It's completed. I was just trying to get everybody on the committee's feedback, you know, just, I wanted a response from everyone saying, yes, I agree with this, or this is what I, this is what the consensus was. I just want, I was trying to get 100%. And I know that there were some that, I think we put a deadline on it. I will have that. It's been completed. We'll send that with all the information we have in the June 2nd report, or before, if you want it before then. It's, but it's, it's completed. It's summarized. I just wanted a acknowledgement from every member.
So, by first of June, or?
It'll be in your June 1st.
June report.
Report, or June 2nd council meeting report, that I can send out prior to that. It's, it's done.
Okay. Thank you, Tom.
Any additional questions from council? Okay, hearing none, we will move on. Thank you all very much for submitting those, taking the time to fill those out. Number 21, park board appointments. So, last work session, we had three applicants who had applied. Trying to find the names. Russ Kennison, Don Burton, Rachel Grime, and Chris Fletcher. The council had requested to move Russ Kennison, Don Burton, and Rachel Grime forward to this meeting for a vote. We felt like they participate, and they were constantly involved in things going on with the park. So, we elected to keep them on the board. We thank Mr. Fletcher for, for filling out the application, and we will definitely keep his name on file. But we do need to vote on, vote on these, so I would entertain a motion for the approval of Russ Kennison, Don Burton, and Rachel Grime for another session on the Moberly Park Board.
She'll move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. Congratulations to those individuals for another, another session on the park board. Number 22, consideration of approval of new and renewal liquor license applications for fiscal year 2025 and 26. I will turn those over to the clerk and let her fill us in on who those may be.
Thank you, Mayor. The city clerk's office presents for your consideration the renewal of liquor license applications for the period of July 1st, 2025, through June 30th of 2026. All applications listed have successfully completed the required review process in accordance with our city code, including reviews by the appropriate city departments. Staff recommends approval of the following businesses for renewal of their liquor license. Aldi, Bean, Bratcher's Market, Break Time 3071 and 3163, Kason Keg, Casey's General Stores 1121 and 2003, Coat Street Corner Grill, Diablo Lingo Mexican Cuisine, El Vicaro, FL 59, which is Fast Lane, Get It and Go Express, Get It and Go Express South, Moberly Mart, Walgreens, Walmart, Express Liquor and Smoke, and Express Liquor and Smoke Number 14. In addition to these renewals, we also present a new liquor license application for the Bucket 1979 located at 1319 North Morley Street. Melissa Anderson is here if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone here that would like to speak on behalf of their license at all? Okay. Do we have a motion for the approval of the renewal and the new application liquor licenses?
She'll move.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The renewal applications and the new requests have been approved. Okay, last thing on the list is public comments. If there's anyone that would like to address the council, now would be the time to do so. No takers again. Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to a work session followed by a closed session to discuss the status of real estate, personnel, and negotiated contracts.
She'll move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. Roll call, please.
Lucas.
Here.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Graff. Skubik.
Yes.
All right. We are adjourned from council meeting. Thank you, everyone, for coming, and we will move directly into work session. Okay, number one, on work session, receipt of bids for demolition of 11 residential structures within city limits of Moberly, Missouri. I assume that is you, Mr. Sander.
Yes. So, as you can see up there, we received two bids there. One was unit price, and then one asked for a price for a total. So, on the unit prices, you know, Weedman was a little cheaper. However, if boarded to all of them, Pullman's was a cheaper overall bid for $40,000, and I think that's what we recommend proceeding with. That's, that is, keep in mind for the demolition and haul off only, the landfill fees will be ours on top of that.
Okay. I noticed that, and I'm, I'm personally fine with that, but I noticed that some of the addresses, you know, we've, we've kind of talked about in the past, focusing in core areas, and this looks like we're doing that. Do you foresee next year continuing on in this area, or do you look to maybe focus on other areas as a whole? Are you ready for other areas as a whole, I guess would be the question?
I think it depends on some of the structures that we get. You know, we have ones that the back walls are falling out of and, and things like where they're.
East Rollins is particularly what I'm referring to.
Yes, East Rollins. These are one. I'm not, I'm not familiar which one it is there, but I mean.
No, not, not one in particular, just, just as a, you know, focusing on an area as a whole.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I, I think that's the best way of doing it, and then sometimes you, maybe like half of them are focused in an area, then half of them are your really bad falling in ones.
Sure.
You know, you kind of mix it up like that. It's probably a good way to move forward.
Okay. It's just always, I, I hate that eyesore when you drive into town and, you know, people are going to the college and going to various areas and that, just that street, you know, it just has a lot of rundown, rundown homes on it, so that's, that's why it came to mind.
On the corridor streets, yes.
Right. Any, any questions from council? Any objection to moving this forward to the next council meeting? Okay, we will move this one forward. Thank you. Number two, a resolution accepting permanent construction easements and conveyances of real property, authorizing and approving payment for interests in real property, authorizing and approving the payment of costs for the acquisition of interest in real property related to the Wabash Heights ARPA project and further authority.
Mr. Mayor, the council will recall that we received an ARPA grant to help us fund the stormwater improvements in Wabash Heights. And so, staff and engineers spent a lot of time and energy getting all the permanent and temporary construction easements. And then there were a couple of tracts of property that we had to acquire fee interest in for the project. So, what this resolution does, I compiled all of the permanent easements and all of the interest in real estate. I did not include the temporary construction easements. They're temporary in nature. And then there were two pieces of property that we had to pay money for. Mr. Riley donated his interest in, in the real estate. We're paying the cost that, the attorney fees that he had. So, this is just ratifying and approving everything that went in. And I think now, if I'm right, you're ready to start with the project.
It's under contract with, with Brown Root.
Right. So, very good. Thank you. Any additional questions from council? Any objections to moving this one forward to the next council meeting?
No.
Okay, we will move this one forward. Number three, an ordinance of the city of Moberly, Missouri to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officials.
Mr. Mayor, this item is an ordinance required by the state of Missouri that the city must re-adopt every two years. It establishes a procedure for certain municipal officials to disclose any potential conflicts of interest, or to declare that no such conflict exists. It just ensures transparency and compliance with state ethics laws, and we're asking that you move this forward for consideration and approval at the next council meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council? Any objections to moving this one forward to the next council meeting? Okay, we will move this one forward. Number four, auditorium electrical bids. Mr. Bach.
So, this was a 10-year plan item, updating the electrical as needed, with the, with the core of that being the electrical room in the basement where all the, all the, the boxes are essentially. Some of it's original. Electricians are hesitant to touch them. So, this is an essential need. We were expecting the bids to be in the 35,000 to 45,000 range based on feedback from Jeremy Patrick. As you can see, two of them are in that range, with one hitting the mark, Tony Arlen, at 35,000. So, we recommend the bid from Tony Arlen. I would note that this will actually hit next budget year. It'll likely be next March, give or take a month, just due to the lead time of the boxes. But, so we ran the process now to set the table for next budget year.
Okay, very good. Any questions from anyone on council regarding the upgrades at the auditorium? Any objection to moving this one forward? Okay. Thank you, sir. Number five, a request from Patrick Campbell to close the 500 block of West Reed Street for a bed racing event on August 2nd, 2025.
Good evening.
Good day.
So, Mr. Campbell submitted his information for this. I believe it was the wintertime. He had the first bed racing. Unfortunately, the fire department won, so.
Do I see a little rivalry starting here?
Well, they had time to stretch.
I remember the snowstorm that day.
I believe there was probably six teams. Due to the snow, it was a success, so he's put in an application for another one this year, so. It'll be August, it'll be warm. to be August, it'd be warm, so.
Very good. And then no objections from your department on, on closing those streets, then, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions from anyone on council? Any objection to moving this one forward? Okay, we will move this one forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, number six, a resolution authorizing the purchase of real estate from Holman Holdings LLC.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is in agreement with Holman Holdings to acquire a piece of real estate next to the former East Park School site. The city had acquired the East Park School site. This is a tract of property that sits next door, so this is in your packet for consideration.
Any questions from council? Further discussion? Any objection to moving this one forward? It's pretty self-explanatory. Okay, we'll move this one forward to the next council meeting. Number seven, issue. An ordinance approving a cooperative agreement for a hotel feasibility study with Moberly Area Economic Development Corporation.
Mr. Mayor, this was an opportunity that was presented to us by MAEDC. A local developer who we are familiar with and comfortable with is considering the opportunity to construct a hotel and has asked for our assistance in contributing to that. This is something the city has done several times in my tenure here. This is a pretty developer-led process. The developer sort of selects which feasibility consultant they wish to work with, and sometimes it's between them and their bank, and so that, that's why these requests come up regularly. But given the discussion I had with Kaylee, I think everybody felt like this was a worthwhile venture for us to participate with, so.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bogowski regarding the hotel feasibility study?
Mayor, I do have a question. Michael, when was the last one completed?
Last one I'm aware of was probably two to three years ago, but focused on a downtown version of the hotel and did not focus on. This would be a more highway kind of traditional hotel development.